She's like, party cra-.
It wasn't even a party, it was like, please hold me.
Well, this is the street.
Please hold me.
Oh my god.
Drive, I don't have a hot sleeve, that'll all be pretty gross.
David, you got a few minutes at the end?
Yep.
Okay.
David, I have to text you back. I haven't seen Bill to ask him, but I'm sure it's gonna be fine, because we're not here.
That'd be great. Yeah, I started, I was texting you during like car or kid pickup, and I'm like, I'm just gonna see him.
This is so in my face.
But yeah, I did get my, uh, my head submitted to the county, got my land use permit from Dave already.
Woo hoo!
But there, there was one thing they asked me about.
You're doing an ADU, right?
Doing an addition.
Oh.
Um.
Yeah, why can't I think ADU?
I thought it was an ADU, over your garage.
It's just, it's not separate, it's just.
Oh, so it's.
So it's just on top of.
Yeah, like you walk from our living room into that place.
Oh, so it'll come into the house?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um.
I was gonna say, when can I move in?
Energy code prescriptive, do you know, do you know what that thing is?
Yeah, I might have to do that, um.
Because she said she attached it, but it wasn't, and so I was confused on what she was.
Yeah, I didn't know if you had to do it for additions or not, but I can, I can knock that out.
Yeah.
Okay, who are we waiting on? Mitchell?
Mitch just walked in.
Is Brian coming, do we know? Have you heard from Brian?
He's gonna be late. He, uh, not cut off at work. He has to write an offer right now.
Oh.
I wonder if it's for the house that Shannon Creek just put up.
Probably a house out by Clamley.
What was that?
With a stone.
And so he said he received a.
Yeah, he just put it up.
Steven offer.
After being out there, uh, last month, he decided, goes. For you, you know, he's just kind of working on this side.
Yeah, why isn't he showing somebody my house? We'll be starting in one minute.
Mm-hmm. Maybe it's because it's a Wednesday. And we don't feel like we should be here, I don't want to say that's why.
I thought we all felt happy.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be, I'm gonna say that's why.
It'd be it.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Traverse City Planning Commission Regular Meeting. It is September 3rd. Welcome, everybody. Hope you had a really wonderful summer. I'm calling this meeting to order. And as usual, we will start with the land acknowledgement. The land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chipewa peoples, who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. Thank you for your strength and resilience in protecting this land, and inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. Roll call.
Commissioner Knapp.
Here.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Here.
Commissioner Heller.
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Swanson.
Here.
Commissioner Cameron.
Here.
Commissioner DeTuri.
Here.
Commissioner Hershey.
Here.
And, uh, oh, Commissioner Chadwell, sorry.
Here.
Didn't see you. And Commissioner McGilvery emailed that he's, um, going to be late, so we'll see if we see him.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Are there any announcements?
No, none at this time.
So we'll move on to number 5A, approval of the minutes of the Planning Commission Regular Meeting, August 5th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I moved to approve the minutes?
Support. Right, we have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to 6A, old business, consideration of regulations relating to conditional rezoning. Mr. Winter.
Yeah, so we had a public hearing last month. As you know, this all came about with the request from, uh, John Collins, because he had been approved for a conditional rezoning where the Third Coast property is and the two adjacent that he owns. Um, as you know, it does have a, an expiration timeline where a certain amount of construction needs to be met. And it was brought to the Planning Commission's attention and staff that this has kind of become a reoccurring problem, uh, with the conditional rezoning. There was a pretty robust discussion, so we brought back a couple possibilities. Uh, we had the public hearing, but there was a lot more discussion, so we wanted to, on request of the Planning Commission, pull together some more information, which Leslie has done, uh, so she would like to present that, and we will gather some additional direction tonight.
Great. So, uh, the last time you met on this, you did ask for a little bit of, um, research and some more analysis of, um, of the options at hand. So currently, the ordinance requires that, um, if you have a conditional rezoning, uh, you have to, um, uh, complete seventy-five percent of the construction within a year, and then you can get an extension. And it, it had become clear that, uh, that seventy-five percent was kind of a, a hard number to determine what seventy-five percent is of a, of construction, and what happens if they don't hit that, and what are the consequences of, uh, rescinding that rezoning, and going back to the original zoning category? It just raised a lot of questions. So we did take a look at some other ordinances in the area. Um, of the fourteen that I looked at, most of them were silent on the, on the issue of conditional rezoning. There were four that allowed, specifically allow re, uh, conditional rezonings. Of those four, only one of them even addressed time limits. And in that case, they just reference, uh, or they allow or require completion within a year, and they, uh, allow up to a one-year extension. And that was full completion. There was no seventy-five percent or anything like that. Um, so, uh, some of the things that you talked about at your, uh, the last couple of times you, you discussed this topic were things like just removing the seventy-five percent rule. Um, and, you know, you could replace it with, uh, slightly more vague language that might give you, give staff a little bit more flexibility. Um, and with that, I see that as a pro and a con, that, uh, substantial completion, uh, if you did use that kind of language, it's still, um, and just took out that specific seventy-five percent, it still can be, um, a little, um, subjective. And, um, and then if you did take out the, another thing that you talked about was taking out the seventy-five percent rule, completion rule, and replacing it with something more specific, like, um, putting, uh, demonstrating that you have a fittings inspection completed for a building. Again, you know, that is an easier thing for us to administer. It's an easy, uh, definable time period, but that's quite a bit at the beginning of the process, and it could, if the goal is to keep projects from stalling, that doesn't do much to keep a project from stalling for several years. Um, you could do what, uh, nine of those other communities did, and just not have, um, any, just be silent on the issue of, uh, conditional rezonings. That, um, one pro to that is that it makes it a little bit less of an open invitation to applicants to come with you and ask for a conditional rezoning. So it's gonna be a rarer kind of thing. But, of course, the con is that without any regulations in place, it's not clear how those would be administered. And a lot of the questions we're facing right now would come right back again. Um, another thing we did talk about is just to, uh, just outright prohibit, um, conditional rezonings, and clearly state that in the ordinance. Uh, I did quickly have a chance to ask the city attorney today if that, beyond just her, um, concern that, uh, conditional rezoning, is she kind of likes the idea of removing it from the ordinance? Is she also behind the idea of outright prohibiting them within the ordinance? And she said that is something that we could do. Um, I haven't found an example of any ordinances that specifically do that. Um, but it's clear within, um, the state legislation, and other analysis and other lawsuits that have arisen from this topic, that, um, that is a possibility. And I think the, again, a pro with that is that we, we just eliminate that, uh, potential question and complication. Um, we have lots of zoning categories, and most of them fit situations. Uh, and if they don't fit the situation, there are other remedies, uh, that you could go through, like a text amendment. Um, and, uh, the only, uh, con really is that there may be a very specific situation where the perfect solution would be a conditional rezoning, and that opportunity just wouldn't be there for people. So, I guess with all of that information, we just, uh, wanted to find out if any of these kind of strike a chord with the Planning Commission? You'd like us to get more information, or go ahead and start drafting a text amendment, um, relating to any of these options, or something we haven't even thought of yet?
If we were to strike, um, conditional rezoning, what would the only other remedy be? Easy A?
Um, you could do, that would, in lots of cases, that would be a use variance. Use variances are a higher threshold, uh, and they're more difficult to get. Um, it could just be that you want a higher zoning category because of some other requirement, like a setback or something, or some other standard that works better for your development. So in those cases, you could ask for a dimet, dimensional variance. Or it may just be that you, um, uh, that there's something quirky in that zoning category that really makes your development untenable, and you might just ask for a text amendment. The next thing on your agenda tonight is a request for a text amendment, where the text just doesn't line up with, uh, you know, the norms or current con, conventions, and it may make sense just to, uh, amend the text instead. So it's kind of case-dependent on what the next step would be for people.
Can I add one other thing on that? So another option would be, um, the planned unit development, or the PUD, that allows flexibility from the base zoning. Now, there is a three-acre minimum for that, and it really should be used for unique properties. It, it's kind of has some built-in backstop, so it can't be abused to skirt zoning. Um, but even though it has a three-acre minimum, upon recommendation of the Planning Commission, the City Commission can approve, uh, applicant applying on a smaller lot, which they did for the Millworks property. That's just over an acre. So that was an example of how this body, the City Commission, worked with an applicant through the PUD to give the flexibility outside of a conditional rezoning opportunity. Because even with conditional rezoning, um, it just changes you to a new set of rules with a, whatever district you're kind of going with, um, in some regards.
Um, do you have a, a guesstimate about how many conditional rezonings we've had within, say, the last ten years? Is this a frequent thing from an administrative standpoint?
So we had a conditional rezoning at TC Lofts, um, the Third Coast Bakery one, the CVS at the end of Front Street. I'm trying to think, the former Fifth Third Bank at Fourteenth and Division, that was one. In both the case of the CVS and the Fifth Third Bank, they did a conditional rezoning, because the base zoning wouldn't allow drive-throughs. So that was their whole motivation there. Um, I thought at one point Breakwater was applying for a conditional rezoning in an earlier iteration of their development. They didn't end up pursuing that one, came back to the drawing board. So those are the ones that just stick out in my mind over the last handful of years.
So, one a year or, or less, roughly?
Um, potentially, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We rescinded one too, didn't we, recently?
No, uh, we rescinded a, um, made a recommendation, the City Commission, to re, rescind a slump. That was for a duplex that at that time required it, yep.
Next one?
I, I definitely think that, uh, the seventy-five percent completion should, we should consider removing that, um, just for all the reasons we've talked about it. It, it, it's tough to denote where a project is. And I think that, at our last meeting, we talked about substantial completion or certificate of occupancy. I think, to me, those two make sense. Um, you know, if, if conditional zoning is something that you're going to keep, those are, uh, those are the benchmarks that, that would make sense to me.
I agree with that, and I'd like to also add, uh, this for food for thought. Perhaps it's tied to the issuance of a building permit. The, um, building code stipulates that you have a hundred and eighty days to commence work after issuance of permit. And if no work has been done subsequently for a hundred and eighty days, the permit's expired, and then you need to go through the process again. So perhaps doing so takes some of the ambiguity out of it.
Yeah, I like that. I, I agree with Maxwell that the seventy-five percent's really hard for us. Um, the occupancy is a pretty hard line that we can, you know, objectively say, you have it or you don't. Where I'm concerned is, you know, we talked about this before, which makes me lean a little bit towards what David is saying, is I think legally, we would have a challenging time denying a permit once they've already started construction. Because at that point, they're vested, right? You've already started your construction and stuff like that. So maybe tying it to, you have to start at some point, makes it a little more clear. Because then we can deny the permit and not have to go through a prolonged legal battle claiming that they're vested. You know, we've been dealing with one for three years, uh, with another property in the city because of that, so.
And, um, is there a certain amount of time before a site plan, um, expires?
So a site plan in our ordinance does not have an expiration date, but a land use permit does. So once you pull the land use permit to begin construction, then you do have an expiration.
So for a lot of people, it would be getting their rezoning, their conditional rezoning, and then, um, obtaining their land use permit. And then they've got, like, a year?
I believe so.
Before their land use permit expires?
Yeah.
Maybe with a little extension, so built in on that front end, there would be somewhere around two years or a little bit more. So I would think somewhere in there would be the timeframe then. If, if you did put a timeframe, you gave people two or three years, or two years with an extension to obtain a land use permit or, uh, construction code permit. Once they do that, you're done with them, and their rezoning holds. Is that kind of what you're thinking?
But what if it, the project stalls for some reason? What?
That happens then?
Another example is TC Lofts, which is, they were nearly finished with the building, and they went and requested theirs. They finished all of the other occupancy floors, so the first five floors of the building. And they were doing the rooftop last, so they came in and requested the conditional rezone. Um, I believe that was the process they went through. The, the one reason, sorry to kind of disrupt from that, this conversation, that I'd be in favor of removing, is because that was really confusing to them, um, just from what I've heard. And, uh, it is a very particular process, so you have to make a very specific request. And if you don't do it at that time, it is very hard to go back and get that changed. Um, they came back to this body to try to build more units on the other side. They only addressed half of the floor. So it's a rooftop building, um, they have a community space, so we have, like, accessible kitchen, grills, outside venue, very cute for the whole building. Um, and then they, that's the north-facing side of the building. South-facing side of the building, they had intended to build out more units later on down the road, or build out maybe a gym or some other community space, but only put in the request for the north-facing side of the, in the conditional rezone. And when they came back before this body, it was denied. Um, so there are now, there's now, there are now two, essentially, two units that cannot be completed, um, cannot be turned into residential units. And the developer, developers were, uh, it was a very sore experience for them. So like, if you don't, if you don't know all of this, and you don't have an attorney, and you try to go through this process, I don't know why we would be doing that to the community. Like, it just feels like extra red tape.
Yeah, it makes it difficult for flexibility through the development process. So to add to that, the original design on the back part of the top floor, which the front half has the community space in, was the utility space.
Correct.
So all the meters, gas, electric, all that for the, uh, all the units were gonna be in there. The utility providers did not want to send staff into a building upstairs, so they put them all on the backside at ground level outside, so they could do the readings, and that did leave the two spaces. So, yeah, they, you know, under something other than a conditional rezoning, we could amend their plan to allow them their permit to make that use. So, yeah, they did come, um, and they did, did get denied by the City Commission. So, yeah, it's just essentially, uh, quite a large footprint sitting vacant right now.
Yeah.
At a time when we're always talking about housing, so.
Yeah. So it's just a, an example of like, well, because we see some examples that worked and that are beneficial, but then there are also some examples that were clunky and maybe didn't benefit.
Another, um, issue that supports the idea, uh, in the mind of the city attorney of removing it is that, you know, it does put the city at some risk, because, um, the process is a little clunky, and it can, uh, smell a little bit like contract zoning. Um, and contract zoning is distinct from conditional rezoning. Contract zoning is illegal, and you can't wheel and deal and come up with, um, a give and take at this level. So they, the applicant has to guess what you want, what is gonna be, uh, attractive enough, and a legitimate, um, condition that they're placing upon themselves. And it may not end up in the best, um, option, because, again, they're kind of guessing. And, you know, um, it leaves things a little bit, um, funny at the end, in my opinion. And, you know, I think, um, in, in some locations, it's just like, you bring your request, you, and if, if it gets shot down, you can never come back again. Um, and unless it's a completely new request. So what is a new request? You know, can they come back endlessly with a slightly different version? And it's a new request? And then, you know, if they are given some, um, input by staff, you know, at what point is, uh, is that input, you know, coming into question as well? Because there's kind of a, something happening that could be considered contract zoning, or something happening without the full, um, you know, scrutiny of the public at a public meeting, and something that's outside of the zoning ordinance. So that doesn't feel right, in my opinion, too. I think it's problematic in general, conditional rezoning. I think that, you know, the, the idea behind it is a good one, and it probably solves some, quite, some problems. Um, but it's not legal in every state. It's, uh, kind of an exception in Michigan, that the, the legislation allows for us, doesn't require that we allow it, but allows for us to do that.
And I think I read in your notes here that one of the, uh, I don't, communities, I can't remember which one, even though they took it out, they had also then granted it in a certain occasion.
So, that was actually, just because I knew about that case, it could be, uh, common elsewhere too, and it's just not in the ordinance. So they don't have a prescribed, um, process for it. But if it's not, if you're silent on it, um, you know, the law still allows people, if they know that that's an option, it still allows them to request a conditional rezoning. So I happen to know about that case, um, but there may be others out there too.
So I think ultimately, what we would want to know is staff to move forward, kind of like three questions. The first is the simplest, and this is just, you know, kind of straw pulling, um, they'll turn over the chair, is whether the commission wants to maintain conditional rezoning as an option in the ordinance or not. If the answer to that is yes, then the next question is, do you want to maintain an expiration of that approval? If no, we can remove that from the language. If the answer is yes again, then the question becomes, do you want to see the expiration tied to the start of construction or the completion of construction? So that's kind of the thought process to work through.
Becky?
Um, I, I'm interested in the stay silent approach, only because it's so common in this area. Um, and understanding that there are alternatives for developers to pursue, like the variances in the PUD approach that you mentioned. What do you, staff, see as the, the most significant downside of staying silent? Is it simply that you're not given any guidelines for implementation? Or is there something else that, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, in some respects, so the act, if you look at the zoning act itself, it's about two sentences to inform us on how to do conditional rezoning, and it's very, uh, very trim. It's not very prescriptive. It does use the word "may," which is telling, which is why you, you have the option to remain silent on it. At the end of the day, it still is a type of rezoning, so even if we remove it from ours, we would still follow the rezoning process outlined in the zoning act, which is, you know, the public hearing at the Planning Commission, fifteen-day notice, mail people three hundred feet, make a recommendation of the City Commission. So that, that would still be a process that would be followed even if we were silent on it, because that's just developed by state law. Um, the only thing that would be different is there would be no expiration date. But there is no requirement to have an expiration date, nor does any other zoning carry an expiration date with it. So I don't see that as being a problem moving forward. But it would essentially, by default, answer question two, there would be no expiration at that point, if someone did pursue it and it did get approved.
So, so am I hearing that, that you don't see significant downsides to the staying silent? Or is there something that I'm?
I don't see a significant downside to, to removing it.
Yeah, can we define staying silent for a second?
So by saying silence, as I'm understanding what you're saying, Jackie, is you remove the language from the ordinance. It still exists as a possibility under state law, which enables us to even have a zoning ordinance.
With the state. Okay.
But that we stay silent.
But we would stay silent, which is the, honestly, the way that most communities do it, as it relates to this topic, from my experience. Would you agree with yours?
Yeah, so I think most of them are silent, because they don't want to hand it to people on a silver platter, and it seems to encourage people to do it then. Um, and, uh, but then that possibility is always there. Um, you know, it's a little strange to have all of these, um, rules surrounding conditional rezoning and kind of set up a process and, uh, then remove it from the ordinance. You know, there might be a tendency to go back to those old rules and guidance. Um, and so I, I think it would be a little strange to completely remove it without also prohibiting it, but you certainly could do that, and it just would make it probably less, um, common. Uh, but I really don't know. I mean, how many people really read the ordinance to that degree to find that in the ordinance? Because it is a little hidden, even though it's certainly in there. It's not where I would have thought to look for it.
Thank you.
Go to your summary?
Yeah, I'm saying that even though it's, seems to be out of step with most of the municipalities listed, that it does serve a purpose to have conditional rezoning. Yes, it's not very frequent, but it is used, um, even though there are other options available, and I think we should preserve that. Uh, I do think that having some deadline seems reasonable to me, even though that's even less, uh, common in the other municipalities listed. But, uh, I don't know from my own perspective, since I am neither a developer nor, um, somebody that has, uh, proposed one of these, uh, conditional rezones, to know whether it's more, was practical to have it as any of. to have it as any of the various options I've proposed, permanent occupancy, foundations laid, whether it's actually substantial completion, or some other note. But all of them seem like something more robust than a 75% threshold that is legally questionable down the road.
So you want to ask? I think you're right, yeah. Okay. I think what we're going to do is ask these questions and go down the line and see what people think, because we can talk about this all day. Want to be asking them?
Yeah, I'll just phrase them, because I have them written here. So the first question is, you know, is it the desire to, we'll just keep it simple, keep it listed in the ordinance or remove it from the ordinance?
Want to go person by person?
I'll let you know.
Okay, how many want to keep it in the ordinance, raise your hand. How many want to remove it from the ordinance, raise your hand. Remove is it?
Um, but can we ask a sub-question of that? The prohibiting?
So, yeah, in that case, we do want to remove it.
Just to poll the group?
Yeah, we do want to remove it. Not everybody, but the majority.
Yeah.
So then it becomes prohibit or stay silent?
How many want to stay silent? Raise your hand. How many, oh, five, how many want to prohibit? One, two, three, four. Very close. Stay silent wins.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I thought it deserved a sub-question.
Okay, so.
What's the next question?
There, there is no more.
There it is.
It's kind of like one of those decision trees, where every question is, so, hearing that, what we will do is bring back for the, what month are we announcing? So October meeting, a, we'll schedule the public hearing. The consensus, from what we heard today, was to remove it but stay silent, so not outright prohibit it. So we'll redline the document for you. We'll get the attorney's review on that over the next month, so she can share on that approach. And then you'll have the public hearing and continued discussion. So just know, if you raised your hand for one choice today, you have the right to change it at the next meeting when the official vote is cast, so it's just for the sake of moving things along.
Um, is it too time-consuming to also bring it back with the prohibition? Because that was a closer vote than the first vote. And like, what if people mull it over and read it over before the next meeting, and they decide one way or the other? Like, I don't, I don't want, you see what I'm saying? But if it's too much of a lift to try to have both?
Let me, uh, it's not a big lift. Let me look at some dates here. So our next meeting will be the 16th. We can bring the red line back to you with the two options to discuss at the study session. Yeah, doing, oh, yeah, because we have that joint meeting next week.
Yes, that's right.
Our next meeting is October, uh, first one, whatever that is.
Yeah.
Well, you want to bring it to a study session, though?
October 7th is next meeting, well, besides the joint.
Let me look into that. Okay, I'm just thinking of some procedural notice things in my head that I don't know enough to comment confidently on.
Can I, I just want to ask one question, but, so what prevails? If state law says you can have conditional rezoning, and you prohibit it, but state law says you can do it?
Well, that's the key word there, is it says you may, it doesn't say you shall.
But it's, okay, but you still.
Shall says you have to allow it, may means it's an option.
So that's why you could still have it as an option, even though you even prohibit it? You could.
No, not, if you make it clear that you prohibit it, then it's prohibited.
Okay.
If you're silent on it, then the local law, then you're going to default to what the state act says.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that they, they have to approve it or anything at that point.
All right. Any other discussion on this topic? Brian?
I don't want to have, discuss it during another discussion session. I know I missed it today, but we've talked about it enough. Just bring it back for a vote, one way or the other.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, in the sense of the current, or, you know, what happens if there's a current process in place for conditional rezoning, then we change?
Yeah, so I did, two meetings ago, the one when we discussed it prior to the public hearing, that question came up, and I did talk to the attorney, and she said that that wouldn't be an issue, the existing contract would remain, it'd be fine. But, yeah, she had no concerns regarding the legality of the existing, so.
Brian?
What happens if the existing contract expires?
Question, I will ask her that.
Yeah, that's something we need to know. Any others before we move on? All righty, ready to move on to B, discussion on commercial facade materials, design sta-
Did we skip one?
Uh, A.
Oh, sorry. That was all business.
Oh, yeah, did you want public comment on that topic?
Oh, you're right. Does anybody have a public comment on consideration of regulations relating to conditional rezoning? I have myself.
John Collins, Third Coast Bakery, the property owner. I appreciate your, I'm a little hoarse, I spent last week in the hospital, but I'm fine, but I'm, I sound hoarse, so I apologize for that. It, it, I was a little bit confused on the discussion, but I think if, if a conditional zoning was made silent, the very fact that we have a permit for that should transition into a conditional zoning permit. And the very fact that we have a time limit, which has not expired, should, should, should not cause it to expire when we get to that point, if there is a conditional zoning, silent process in place. In other words, if you've decided to go silent on it, and we have a conditional zoning, and we're the only one, we're the only one that's effects, and we in good faith have been trying to develop this property, that we should be, although, although it's gone silent, our permit then should transition into a permit, which is now being held, handled under the go-silent provision. At least that would seem to me, to be fair to everybody. But I appreciate your consideration of this. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so we will move on now to new business. Consideration and discussion of a zoning text amendment application received by, is it Josiac?
Josiac.
Yep.
Consulting to remove the residential density limit in the hospital districts, no action at this time. Mr. Winter?
Yeah, thank you. As you stated, we did receive an application from Josiac Consulting. I believe they're working on a potential residential property over in the hospital district. Now, the hospital district is divided into two subclasses, H1 and H2, with a little nuance between the uses allowed and some of the dimensional standards. But it does have a density limit of 29 units per acre, which is all that can be built within that district. Now, talking with the zoning administrator, back in 2010, the city began the process of removing the density limits, first in the commercial districts, then they were removed from the D districts. In 2021, we got around to removing them from the multifamily districts. And all along, the approach has been, over the last 15 years, to regulate the scale and intensity of the building, rather than the number of units that the inside is developed on. It allows developments to be more flexible to changing demographics. Like, for instance, in the last, I think it was 15 years in the city, our average household size has gone from about 2.5 to 2 people. So, you know, that alone, with 7,000 units, is a difference of 7,000, or about 3,500 people that additionally need to be housed, and typically in smaller units, as the house, housing sizes get smaller. So he has submitted this application to remove it. We've gone through the zoning ordinance, and as our zoning administrator has noted, this seems to be a piece that was overlooked and never addressed through that multi-year effort of slowly rolling back the density limits, and instead focusing on dimensional standards to regulate the size of the box, rather than the units inside. So what he has asked for is consistent with the rest of the districts, and that is to remove the density limit from that district, and then instead focus on developing the building, and let the market decide the way that it gets divided inside to meet that demand. Whenever we look at zoning amendments, we resort back to the master plan to see if it provides any guidance on that particular request. And it doesn't speak specifically to this one, but I put in some of the applicable information. You know, we have six guiding principles. One is to encourage quality housing in locations of the city with access to non-motorized and public transportation. And this location, over in the H district, is a very walkable community, you have a lot of amenities nearby. It does call in the mobility action plan for some additional bike lanes on Elmwood or bike facilities. We already have some on West Front, on the north side of this district. And I forgot to mention in there that the free bay line, running about every 15 minutes as a form of public transportation, does go right through there as well. So within the action plan, which are some specific steps to help achieve that vision in the next five years, we did have the one that called for evaluating zoning districts and uses allowed to determine if they continue to meet the needs of the community, and that's essentially what this is asking, you know, is this limitation on the number of units per acre meeting the needs of the community, especially over in that location. And the next one, 16C, was increased neighborhood-scale healthcare and food-related goods and services to provide a 15-minute walking radius to neighborhoods. And although that was intended more to be more permissive in allowing those uses in other parts of the city, this is achieving the same thing, but flipping it, you know, building more neighborhood around where they already exist, where the hospital is. It's not uncommon in healthcare to have almost an economy of scale, all along front, all kinds of healthcare providers, all are located in that general area. So when you look at the future land use map, the area of the hospital is classified as institutional. So again, these are areas that are typically, typically governed by either government or quasi-government agencies. So examples include NMC, the airport, Munson, those areas in the city. It does say in the plan that housing is permitted in most of these, and it typically should reflect a development pattern of dense building siting, extensive public services, and typically operating through a campus model, integrated, with a integrated shared mission between auxiliary uses. So again, it speaks in the plan directly to the dense building siting in these institutional future land-used areas. So with that, this is just being presented to you, as the chair mentioned, there is no action today, the public hearing will be scheduled in October. But we wanted to get this before you, so you could ask any questions that you may have. And I would note that the applicant, Scott Josiac, is here today, so if there's any specific questions for him, I'm sure he's willing to come to the podium and answer those.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Brian, I think you beat Jackie. Brian?
Just when it brings, comes back to us. I mean, most of the H1 district is actually, or a good portion of it, is bordering R1B. So I'd like to see the, if you can get, provide a comparison between the different, the surfaces, the setbacks, building sizes, the lot coverage allowance, between both, you know, between the H1 and the R2s, R3s, and any other adjoining zones. But mostly, I'm looking at our map, it's mostly all R1B. And, and one of your, your things that you cite, you know, we talk about this, and I didn't realize this was in the master plan, we talk about, you know, institutional campuses, which are government or quasi-government. Munson's not a governmental institution. We control its zoning, unlike the airport, or NMC, or the other, or the Commons, which all have their own independent zoning, or where we don't have any zoning authority over them. So, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, not saying that at all, just want to make sure we look at, you know, what potential impacts this may have. So that's the questions I had.
Yep, we can bring that together in a table, comparing those. I will note, just a point of clarification, we do control zoning at NMC. So both NMC and Munson, in our zoning ordinance, are required to submit and have on file campus plans of how they're going to do that. In fact, we just met with NMC recently, because they, they redid their strategic plan. So we're like, probably time to update that campus plan.
We have control over NMC.
Mm-hmm. All their zoning.
But no other schools, just community colleges?
That's true, yeah. It's only the K through 12 public schools that we don't control zoning on.
Okay.
Yep. And, yeah, you're right, the airport does its own until, I think, that just started about three years ago, four years ago, through that, yeah. Yeah.
All right, Jackie, what's next?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I wondered if we could be informed about what share of the Traverse City land mass is represented by the H1, H2? So just the scope of the, of the issue. We're, we're sensitive to growth in housing supply. I think I'd also like us to be sensitive to growth in the population of healthcare providers. And I wondered, in terms of this limited amount of geography, if there is, if there is a trade-off between, you know, space for professional service providers versus space for dwellings, and is anyone speaking on behalf of the, the healthcare provider community? That would, that would be helpful to me.
I see H2 being a zoning category that makes a lot of sense, covering primarily the Munson Hospital on either end of town. But H1 strikes me as a little odd. It, yes, surrounding the main Munson Hospital, it does serve the capacity in its definition of those additional commercial residential purposes that are connected to the hospital. But I would be fine just rolling that into a C1 or C2 zoning, and then we'd have a little more consistency citywide, because those are similarly neighborhood-centric commercial districts. And, yeah, so we'll, in the H1, you do have some commercial, you do have some residential, it is connected to healthcare, but a lot more of that broader campus has actually spilled outside the city limits. If you go right across Cedar Run, you can find, or across North Long Lake, and along Cedar Run, along Royal Drive, along Ganna Drive, you can have many other clinics and facilities that are indirectly associated with the Munson campus, but are not part of our zoning map, because they're in Garfield Township. And they're not listed as a specific hotel district in Garfield's map, they are another commercial district.
One, one last comment for me. Just, you mentioned alignment with the master plan. A reminder that we do now have an adopted strategic plan for the city, and it's going to be fleshed out in terms of goals and action plans here within the next month or two. And I'd, I'd like us to be evaluating this in terms of alignment with the strategic plan also.
Although not required of us.
Yeah, that's, that's something that has been talked about. Zoning has to be based on a master plan, so just keep that in mind if they fall in odds with one another, but they are very, very similar.
I think it's worth evaluating whether there are discrepancies.
Brian?
I mean, the request is specifically for H1. If we're going to, considering doing H2, then we do want to make sure we reach out to the main property owner of H2, which is Munson. If that's what this planning commission is discussing, I doubt they'd have any objections, but I wouldn't want to act, oh, insulting the affected property owners.
Mm-hmm. So in this case, the application before you is for H1. Do you want the public hearing notice to include H2 for consideration by the planning commission?
I'd, I'd push for NMC 1 and 2 as well. As somebody who just joined their planning and budgetary- I'd push for NMC 1 and 2 as well. As somebody who just joined their Planning and Budgetary Council, I think it's worth, and I agree with Brian, that it's probably worth notifying them that this is a possibility. You know, I deal with students struggling with housing all the time, so they'd probably appreciate not being limited to 29 units or whatever it is.
I think they're even lower. They might be 15 an acre.
Yeah, probably, something like that.
NMC is another one that has two subclasses, a 1 and a 2.
It's almost immaterial for NMC because we don't say on this acre, you can have only so many units. We look at the entire property, right?
Yeah, we talked about that internally, and that's why we just threw it in for reference, that it's in there. But when we looked at it, it's, they do have such a big parcel that the units per acre, when you look at it, hasn't been a problem to them, but that doesn't mean that it wouldn't be in the future. But yeah, as it sits right now, they haven't hit a roadblock with that. But, you know.
Yeah, and if they decide to sell a parcel, then it wouldn't change in our zoning, but it wouldn't necessarily be part of their campus plan anymore.
So we need to answer some, oh, Jerry, go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm, so there's nothing tying that any of the housing in these H1 would be related to healthcare, though, right? There's nothing to.
Nothing that we could do.
Because I remember with the short term, and I remember that this was years ago, but, you know, there was this kind of, they wanted to put a development for the hos- for hospital workers or families, but then it was, it wasn't clear if that was actually the intent of the.
We didn't have a definition.
Yeah, I remember that.
There was a text amendment to try to create a definition.
Yeah, it's like a hospitality house.
Right.
Which was residential units for a short term.
Correct.
But it's supposed to be people who either have family members or themselves are getting healthcare, but.
But it is not.
It's not used that way.
Used that way.
And is that language still in that zoning? So is that something that needs to be, or guess my point is, is like, are we increasing the density for healthcare purposes or housing purposes? And does it matter? Because it just has a hospital district, so.
I think it'd be best to think about it as increasing housing in general. It is close to the hospital, it can be used for that purpose. Now, the developer themselves or the owner could put some restriction on it that, you know, but that's not something that we can do through zoning.
Right.
Limit who gets to live there and stuff like that. And then you get into the whole Fair Housing Act and all that kind of stuff. So if I may, can I call the applicant up?
Yeah, I was about to ask that.
Yeah. Sorry, Scott, you weren't getting out of that tonight. I know you have a client that you're working with, and I don't ask you to disclose, but are you able to share anything about the nature of the project that you're involved in?
Actually, I truthfully cannot at this point. I think it was just one of those things where, you know, you immediately get in the ordinance and you look at, well, we're strapped by impervious surface, building height. So we have the forms, and now we're trying to figure out, are we putting parking in the, you know, underneath the building so that we can have residential all above it, you know, so we keep up with setbacks for parking? So we're just trying to juggle all these things, and this just kind of, as we did the review, it just popped in like, okay, what if we get 32 units, you know, or in a ratio of 32 units per acre or something? Are we before this body? Do we have to blank those rooms out, like what we're talking about at the, you know, for all the purposes?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So the question was asked, and I don't think we answered it, do you want to consider H2 also? I know there was some request for you to provide some information about H2. And can you do that in time before the public hearing?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's all just compiling what's in the zoning ordinance.
I'm interested in both NMC 1, NMC 2, and H2, just noticing it, just in case.
This is dramatically increasing the scope, but it is listed as a potential thing for under-requested action. HR does have density limits for hotel rooms, but if you have that hotel converted to an apartment building, you don't have the same density limits for the residential units. So that seems just like a really odd quirk that should be cleaned up.
All right, so, again, I, I think I'll go ahead and notice it broadly, as you guys have said. That gives you opportunity to have a more robust discussion and recommendation. So what I'm hearing is the NMCs, the H, and the.
HR.
The HR for the hotels.
And H1 and 2.
Yeah, yeah, both of those. And same thing with NMC 1 and 2. Yeah, we'll go ahead and notice that. It may be like the Union Street rezoning, where you had an application, a specific application, and you broadened it. And so if the vote was to deny the broaden, then you would probably be requested to take action on the specific.
Yeah.
Just a nuance there.
But if we have a broader discussion, then we have a better sense of how it fits into the community.
Yeah. To give you a little frame of reference of what 29 eight, 29 units an acre looks like, our neighborhoods, R1B, are 22 units per acre. So again, it's not really dense by like, a lot of means, so.
The request that Brian made earlier with the table that you were going to have for comparisons, will that also include uses? Just so I don't have to dig. You don't have to. I am mostly.
This is segueing into our next agenda topic.
I know, I know, I know. The only reason I call that out is because somebody, maybe Jackie, maybe Brian, somebody mentioned about whether or not this would impact the hospitality, nope, like the office buildings for medical providers. So I just want to make sure that those are listed uses in quite a few other areas so that we're not.
Yeah.
Displacing.
Yep. And I think it's important to remember, too, that if we're interested in expanding healthcare services, that means we need healthcare providers that need housing. And you know, I mean, again, with Munson having to bring in 200 nurses.
Where are they going?
That's a question that I think they're figuring out, too, but it just speaks to the need, you know, and it's, it's impacting all the industries right now.
Anything else on this topic? Any public comments on this, this comment? Public comment? All right, then we'll move on to the next, which is discussion on commercial facade materials, design standards, and the zoning ordinance in general.
Yeah, bear with me. I'm going to see if I can't get my computer plugged in to this one, just to visually walk.
Thank you.
A little better. Thank you, everyone. Okay. So at our last meeting, the planning commission had a site planner review. As you know, we don't get many of them, maybe one a year before the planning commission. But there was a robust discussion about facade materials. If you recall, the district calls for, this is the C4 specifically, durable materials utilizing the predominant building materials of traditional brick and stone used in the regional district, or constructive materials of comparable aesthetic value. So on the one hand, we're defining the materials based on their durability, but allowing exceptions based on their aesthetics. So those are kind of disconnected a little bit, and there was, again, really good discussion on that. So staff was asked to bring back some different ways to maybe tighten up that language a little bit. So in this report, I have put together some examples, just pulled a few of some different areas that have approached this in a different way with more specificity, therefore removing some of the vagueness. Some are more cut and dry, some are a little bit more flexible. So we're going to go through that and then see if there's one that the planning commission, an approach that they like better, or one that they like least, and go from there. So in Acme Township, they redid their zoning ordinance after rewriting their master plan. And they had a true form-based code area, and it wasn't working very well. We talked about that, I think, in October of '23, how those are challenging in built areas. So they switched to more of a hybrid model, which is very similar to what we use here in the city. So in their case, when it comes to building materials, they just outright prohibit certain things, such as IFIS. Now, IFIS was the material in question that we discussed last time. It is a foam material with kind of like a harder surface on the outside. It looks, in my mind, very fake when you see it, but it's used a lot of times because it can be shaped to make architectural features at a pretty economical cost. I was at Cherrylands Center last week at Laguna's in there, and I noticed the, the architecture of the building, because, you know, they converted it to an outdoor mall and stuff, it's IFIS. You can go up and knock on it. It's not stone, it sounds weird, it feels weird. It's not durable in the sense that, as David mentioned at the last meeting, a bike handle luggage could hit it and dent it and stuff like that. It is durable in that it won't rot, it won't, you know, kind of wear away in time. So durable has some subjective nature to it as well, what you're looking for. So in the case of Acme, they have certain amount, or certain materials that they limit to, say, 25% of the facade, and then outright prohibit other materials. So it's just like, yep, these, we're not going to allow in any amount, these will allow just in a little bit from there. Kalamazoo, they're a little more flexible with theirs as we were looking through it, and they're not as prescriptive. They talk about front facades, how you're going to treat side and rear facades, especially for non-residential buildings that are viewable from the street, either on a corner lot. Or if you remember from our meeting, we talked about that west facade that has, it's pretty blank, but it's facing a property, so they're limited. We did have a meeting with them. They were going to connect with the Arts Commission to see if there's an opportunity to put a mural or something, or make it at least architecturally more interesting if code's not going to allow them to put windows in to somehow do that. As I mentioned in the material, or in the memo as well, we did meet with them after the meeting, since it is a requirement for a land use permit, and they will be doing masonry at least on the first floor all the way around where all the people are, because they have them on the three sides of patios. And a brick-like looking material that utilizes real mortar above, at least that's what they're moving towards. They haven't submitted their revised plans yet, but we were able to push the needle on that. So anyhow, Kalamazoo, again, they do re-limit, limit some, but again, they, they allow a lot of flexibility here, unlike Acme, you know, to the maximum extent possible, we'll prohibit those. So that puts staff or the planning commission sometimes in a subjective situation where, you know, you have to make a decision, and it may just be up to the applicant to make a case that they need that material. In other cases, they've limited some characteristics of the materials, such as the reflectancy of glass when meeting your transparency requirements, metal panels, they say it has to be at least 18 gauge, you can't use it for siding, you can use it for utility screening. So in other words, in very small amounts. But again, not very prescriptive compared to, say, like Mansalona, who after their master plan created one that took a bit of a different approach, and they made a table, which is a lot easier to understand. So it does allow materials in different percentages of the facade. So rather than outright prohibiting a material, if it's a less desirable material, they have it in a very small percent. So you can use it as an accent or an architect, but architectural feature, but it can't serve as like the primary facade material. So if you look there, traditional brick, you can use 100%, natural stone, veneer, even things like wood or cement board siding, 75% of the wall. But some of the other ones like IFIS, glass block, translucent dark tinted or mirrored block, that's all very, very limited. They didn't outright prohibit it because sometimes you like a little creativity in the design, but they wanted to keep it trimmed. Another option that's very, very similar to that is in Bay Township on the north end of, north side of Lake Charlevoix, they have an area called Horton Bay. Nothing like Traverse City, if you've ever been to Horton Bay. It's like a beautiful little village on the lake. But they were, it's historic, they were very concerned about new development not having, not, not matching what's there already. So in addition to building materials, they addressed a lot of other things through an amendment, like lighting and stuff like that. But again, this was very similar. But you can see here in some cases, they, they have different numbers, it's a different community, so they had different values that they wanted to use. Some things they outright prohibit, but unlike the Mansalona one, they did go through and allow some flexibility in justifying through the planning commission the use of some alternative materials. And I think that's important now because with changing construction codes, more focus on energy conservation, not just in the building itself, but in the production of the materials, we're starting to see new materials come out, that it's hard to, to regulate with specificity when we don't know what's coming in the future. So this gives a little more flexibility in that regard, to be able to kind of meet people with the new materials and not have to go through a prolonged amendment process. That could slow things down for three months for someone who's trying to work on a design.
So in this table situation, every time a new product comes out, or somebody approaches, they want to use a new product, you, you place it somewhere in the table each time? How do you keep up with all the new products that come out?
Well, you know, you could through an amendment, but the way that this language has been structured, you know, there are a couple standards there. So the planning commission can make that decision at the time of reviewing and approving. So it doesn't require an amendment because the language already allows them that flexibility. So that would be a case-by-case basis at that point. Whereas if you put it in the table, then that's just the law of the land. So with that, the first question in here is whether or not there's a preferred approach that the planning commission would like to see to take for regulating the facade materials? More prescriptive, more of a prohibition list of materials they don't want, so on and so forth?
I found the Mansalona approach to be easily understood from both a planning commission standpoint and a developer standpoint. And I, I am in favor of heading in that direction.
I agree.
I agree, too.
Yeah.
I'm generally in favor of less prescriptive for the reason just outlined, that you can't have new materials. It's not like there's the newest version of wood siding coming out every day or whatever, but there are new products that come online, or new formulations of existing products. So I don't really want to ban something, even if we think it looks ugly or doesn't work as well now, because there is a possibility that that product or something substantively similar to it could end up having some changes and becoming something that looks very nice.
In most of these tables, there's only one that had a 0%. So I hear you. Let Jay go. Okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, Jackie.
What would the process be for modifying a list, a prescriptive list like this to accommodate innovation in building materials?
That's what you just said, right?
Yeah, so it would be the normal amendment process to codify it in there. I, I do like that approach, and I think that speaks to what Mitch was saying, too, is allowing the plant, planning commission, or if it's not planning commission staff, if it's by right, the flexibility if it meets those standards that were outlined, like in the, I think it was the Bay Township example. That allows you to evaluate it in real time without having to go through that formal amendment process. Now, there may be a case where a material's come up a few times, you're like, well, this is becoming more commonplace, maybe it justifies an amendment now.
So I like the Bay Township language. The difference is here in the city, we don't review all site plans. So some are done by staff, some are done by the planning commission. You could approve something, and the planning commission may object to it, but it doesn't come before us until later. So if we go forward with that approach, we need a way to resolve that so that the planning director and the planning commission are on the same page when something is being proposed that doesn't slot into any of these existing categories. Or it's always a planning commission decision, in which case that just adds an extra layer onto something that we maybe don't want to do it. But just looking for some type of creative solution there.
Also, I don't know how we address this, but to me, part of the problem with the discussion at the last meeting was, was this material durable? So as you put in here, it doesn't rot. So in that sense, it could be considered durable, although you could punch your fist through it. So in that sense, it's not durable. So we're in the position, because of this standard, of determining what is durable and what is not durable. We're not experts in the field, so how do we get around that?
And is the purpose of the ordinance to have durable buildings or aesthetically pleasing buildings?
Or both.
Yeah, and so I think that largely comes down to how you structure the language, you know. Right now, it says durable.
Material.
Material, you know, I mean, that could be removed through the amendment. Material, you know, I mean, that could be removed through the amendment, it could just say, you know, emphasis on traditional building materials, I mean, we, we could work through this in a couple iterations over the next few meetings.
Even traditional building material could be considered vague. I mean, what is it, I mean, okay, there's brick, there's stone, there's wood, you know, what else is a tradit- traditional building material?
Bamboo is traditional in East Asia, but not here.
I know, I'm trying to remove the ambiguity as much as we can.
And I think we, we can get there, we would need time to play with the language. We didn't invest a lot of time in it yet because we wanted direction first, so we'll, we'll answer that in subsequent probably discussions.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of traditional building materials because...
As a, as a language?
As a language.
Okay.
It omits contemporary architecture and design, which I think fit in the community quite well.
I'm guessing we don't have this, or anything close to it, and it would take an ungodly amount of staff time to do it, but is there any inventory of our current portfolio of building material types?
Can you restate that?
Do we have any list either by building or overall through our commercial districts of like how much of it is brick, and how much of it is wood, and how much of it is glass?
Or other material types?
Yeah, we've never conducted that study like a...
Like I said, it would take an ungodly amount of staff time.
Yeah, it would take, yeah.
But it could be very useful if we're seeing, okay, what percentage of certain materials, and we're already at 15% of that.
But do you want the past to guide your future?
That too.
You know, that's, that's the kind of the question.
Yeah, my, my issue is if we're setting a standard for what we want it to look like based on aesthetics and cultivating a certain traditional view, pardon the word "traditional," but that standard that we're setting is not exemplified by what we currently have, even if we think it is.
Right.
As long as we're throwing terms around.
Here we go.
Just talk about historic. Do we want our buildings to be, all look historic, even if they're not in the historic district? I mean, we make that reference in almost throughout our site plan review, and do new buildings actually need to have, reflect the buildings around them? I mean, there's a question right there that really gets down to the nitty gritty. Do we want to make sure everything looks somewhat alike, or can people be creative? I've seen interesting new buildings go up, and I think, wow, that's really cool, and I've seen them, oh my God, what are you guys doing? How did they allow that? It just depends on everyone's artistic taste, I'm sure some people would love it, but if you want to get into it, everyone said they liked the Manzalona table, so if you get into that, there's no issue regarding traditional, there's no issue regarding durable, you're defining what the, what things are acceptable in these districts, but you should, you know, but I'm assuming we're only doing that for, you know, and what districts are we doing it in?
So right now, that is only a requirement in the C4, but that's going to lead to our next part of the discussion.
Yeah, I know.
What's the next part of the discussion?
All right, so what I'm hearing to bring back is, it, it sounds like that table approach was liked by most that have spoken today, with some flexibility built in, we'll play with some language on that, we need to be careful with using how we use words, traditional, historic, durable, aesthetic, things like that, because it's open to subjective interpretation. Okay, so we'll begin working and compiling what that might look like, which then leads us to the, oh, sorry, you guys have been watching me take my own notes this whole time. Good luck trying to figure out what that all means. So that brings us to the next part of the report, the discussion. So the C4 district is the only district that requires this particular language in facade materials, however, you've, we find that in the part of the district chapter called special requirements. So every zoning district at the end has special requirements, these are more of the design, form type requirements, if you will, speak to the aesthetic and architectural design of the building. So within there, each of our seed districts has an intent and purpose section, and that kind of, I put those in the report just so you can understand a little bit of what that is trying to accomplish. Even though they're all different, or they're all commercial, they do differ in scales and intensity and things like that, based on where they're located primarily. So what I did in the table was I went through and took the C1 through C4. Since we were talking about a C4 district, I only left with the, or started with the four commercial districts, of course, this could be expanded to talk about the 3D districts, and then we could start getting into some of the others, the Rs, the Is, and things like that. But the reason I put this together is because it's, it's been difficult for us administratively on the inside. The zoning ordinance, in some cases, you have a very straightforward standard, yet in the next district, it's worded differently, and that creates a sense of vagueness. In some cases, a standard is applied to three of the districts and not one. Why wouldn't it apply to that commercial district, but the other three, I don't necessarily know. Maybe it doesn't need to apply, maybe it does. We just wanted to open up this conversation. So some of them, you'll see like reference number six, seven, eight, they're all worded the same, only the dimensional standard changes, how much of it, and that, that's easy to administer. In some cases, it gets more vague. When you get down to number nine, it's talking about vertical modulation, 10 talks about horizontal modulation, and that's, that's intended to break up big facades, they look like an aggregate of smaller pieces, more human scale, if you will. In some cases, like with number nine, it does say offsets don't need to be any, they can't be less than eight inches, but on the horizontal modulation, there isn't a numerical dimension that we can say, yes, you've met the standard, or you haven't. And these are some of the conversations that we get into with the developers and the applicants and things like that. Another one would be looking at number 14, in that ca- 13 and 14. So in number 13, we talk about windows being recessed outside of all the buildings, but with no dimensional standard. You get to number 14, for the C4 district, we do specify that it needs to be recessed four inches. So we've literally had conversations with developers who are like, no, the window's recessed half an inch, I'm meeting that standard, well, clearly that's not creating the shadow lines and everything that it's intended to do. So from an administrative standpoint, when things become vague like that, it's, it's a gray area for us. And it's not just for us, but also the applicant as well, you know, they, they, they want to get their permit and get started, and we're not really giving them the clearest path forward. So again, I put these all in there for you to see, it's not often that we compile it in a table for comparisons, we heard that on the previous agenda item, that you would want some of that. So I have created that second question for you. Do you want to address the facade materials as a standalone and move forward with that amendment? Or do you want to roll that into a broader discussion of the special requirements for the commercial districts in general, taking a swing and looking at all of these standards for these four districts? Of course, we could expand that in the future to other districts, I would encourage maybe sticking with these four at once, it's a manageable amount to take in, and then we can move on.
I just want to thank you for doing that. It's really, really eye-opening.
I find it a little curious how, we've had this discussion, but a big part that's been ignored is that roughly half the area of the C4 district is also covered by the Historic District Commission, which has much more prescriptive standards for what the design looks like. And thus, we have a site plan for a building west of Union that came before us at our last meeting, but if it was east of Union, we wouldn't have had to deal with that because it would have had to meet the Historic District standard.
It still has to meet all the zoning, though.
Yes, I know that, but that facade treatment wouldn't have even come into play because they would have had to go with something else.
Potentially.
Which is maybe why there's some holes, maybe you, maybe the previous authors were relying upon an additional round of review.
Yeah, and that's the thing too, is the, the Historic District doesn't actually have prescriptive standards, they, they have Secretary of Interior guidelines, but I've never seen them referenced at the meetings, you know, it's more of a, it should be this, it should be that type of thing.
Right.
I think you noticed, noted there's been 100 changes to our current zoning ordinance, and I can tell you from experience, sometimes the actual ordinance that gets adopted has things in it that were never intended to be in there, because, you know, you end up having these housekeeping changes in ordinances, city commission sees them all the time, and things that, because, because you write these ordinances and then you rewrite them, and the actual version that ends up in front of people when they adopt them, sometimes are different than what everyone actually thought was in there. That being said, yes, I think some of the, some of the, I think there's, some of the inconsistencies are glaring, it should be cleaned up.
I would also be in favor of rationalizing all of the design standards across all of the commercial zoning districts that are noted here.
Your question two, correct? I'm in favor of that too.
Of...
Question two.
Yeah, not just looking at the materials, but all of the design standards.
I mean, have you looked at question three yet?
Have you seen the people? They're jacked over here. I can handle that.
I'm also interested for whatever it's worth, but I would prefer question three, so if it's a comparison.
That rolls into question three.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have a comment to make on this?
All right, so question three. From what I've heard so far with question one, that table was more desired with some nuance prescribed here, would like to roll it into a broader review of all of those. And so question three is getting into the, the overall zoning ordinance rewrite. So that's one thing we've been talking about internally with the city manager and the city attorney for some time, you know, zoning ordinances, and Brian hit on it there for a minute, you get a lot of, a lot of mistakes in a way, where things you don't get caught through subsequent amendments that create discrepancies, inconsistencies with the ordinance, and we're frequently doing amendments just as housekeeping to, to clean that up. It's kind of like that idea, I mean, having been amended over 100 times, that like when you make a copy of a copy of a copy, like one blemish just gets like perpetuated and gets worse and worse and worse. So we are looking at starting this process later on in this calendar year. It's a pretty natural segue after adopting a new master plan, I think you saw that in some of the examples at the beginning of this report. Yeah, I think we're just finding that in the last 26 years, the community has changed a lot, we've had a lot of amendments that we've been doing piece by piece, the rewriting of it allows for a more holistic, comprehensive look at the whole ordinance as you go through that exercise to understand how it all works. But I want to emphasize that rewriting the zoning ordinance is not just throwing the baby out with the bathwater, you don't just scrap the whole thing and start from scrap, you scratch, you start with what you have, and you begin kind of typically through a process, the first is restructuring it, right? I know as staff, we don't like it, and we've heard from a lot of the planning commissioners, we don't like the pyramid zoning with the uses, like what's allowed in C1 is then allowed in C2 plus a few more, and then what's allowed in C3 is C2 plus C1, you know, it gets a little confusing, it's not all listed there, you have to constantly flip back. What we would rather do is move towards a land use matrix, you know, where you put all the uses on the left side of a table, you put all the districts at the top, and then you mark where that use is allowed. Because sometimes people have a business, they know what they want to do, so they just want to know where they can do it, and it makes it really quick and easy to see, you just follow that table. So that would be the first step, and then kind of laying it out in a different format, and I have some, some suggestions on how we can do that. So that requires really changing no content for that first part. The next is going through and identifying the discrepancies, and we would want to set up a new ordinance to help reduce the amount of conflicts that will come through the inevitable amendments, all ordinances get amended over time. And one of the best ways to do that is not repeat things throughout the ordinance, say it once and point back to it. So when you change it once, you don't, oh shoot, I didn't realize in chapter 13 I needed to change it too, because it's a summary of all the dimensional standards. So that's one thing that we can do.
That's a great idea.
And then we will begin working with the attorney at that point to understand any legal updates that need to be made, either through new legislation that has impacted zoning, there's, there's none that I'm aware of right now, but just we'd want to go through that exercise, and additionally, any case law that has added clarity to zoning law that we would need to accommodate in our, in our zoning ordinance. And then from there, then you start working on incorporating recommendations of the master plan. And that is why you often see zoning ordinances rewritten or heavily amended after a master plan is adopted, because the zoning ordinance is the primary tool for implementing the master plan, and you see that throughout, it's not the only one. And then once that is done, then it would be a public hearing as required, it's the same process for amending an ordinance for adopting a new one, then a recommendation to the city commission who would have the, the final say. So our intent would be to do this in-house, so we wouldn't be taking this out with a consultant, which is why we're kind of pushing it back later in the calendar year when we have some time, but I just want to note that as we go through this process, it would be, it's a long process, it'd probably be a solid year to get through it, to go through all the iterations and things like that. We'll talk about that process a little more as we iron out what it might look like. Obviously, the planning commission would be heavily involved in this, as the ones who have to adopt it at the end, and we may discuss setting up like the repair and a committee specifically to work on it, a little more nimble group, and then go from there. So that brings up question three. We've already heard that the facade materials, we'd like to roll those into a broader discussion of special requirements. Do you want to begin working on that now, or do you want to just roll that issue into the rewrite of the zoning ordinance? That's kind of where we're looking for that direction.
I think it should be rolled into this, this is really exciting to me. I don't know about anybody else up here, I'm pretty sure every single one of you has gotten a question from somebody saying, what does this ordinance mean, or where do I go to find this thing, or isn't there a prohibition on sound after a certain time? Like, we all get asked these questions so many times, and I've dug through these ordinances so many times to find questions for people, and I think with a rewrite, that would solve a lot of that. It would solve staff getting those questions, it might solve the city attorney getting random questions, I, I think it's well overdue, and I'm a visual person, I love a table, a table will be really helpful, yeah, I'm really excited about it.
Yeah, I should emphasize, there's been a, an effort, I'd probably say, what, the last 10 years or more, to kind of move zoning to an easier to understand format. Like, it applies to everyone, but for a long time, for decades and decades, zoning was always written in legalese, you know, it didn't make a lot of sense to the average person, even though those rules apply to them and dictate what they can do with their property. So we would intend to use a master, or use a, an approach like that to the zoning ordinance that has a lot of images, examples, tables, maps, things like that, because people tend to digest that a little easier.
Yeah. Brian?
Are you going to do this in-house, are you going to contract it out, and what is the timeline to getting this done?
So we would do it in-house, I would say it would take at least probably a year to, to get it to adoption, you know, we can start putting the pieces together. With everything, it depends on what comes before us that we have to, to deal with, like applications and things like that, but yeah, that would be our approach, is in-house, probably about a year.
What happens if we get another one of these commercial facade things during that year, what do we do?
We've had one in my entire time here, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have...
It's like never come up before.
Usually, you know, by the time that site plan came to you for 124, we'd been working with a developer over a year. We don't have any, any other projects like that in the queue where people are talking with us. Doesn't mean it couldn't happen, it doesn't mean that they're required to meet with us, but...
Right.
So my feeling is, we've got this stuff in front of us now, it's fresh in our minds, if you put it off for a year or... If you put it off for a year or six months, you know, then we kind of start over from scratch. And it gives direction kind of where we want things to go. And the first steps, it's not really going to have an impact. So I think that, I think it needs an overhaul. And we're going to spend a lot of time on this now anyways. Now, do I think it needs to be our number one priority? No, but if we've got a light agenda, let's just keep it in front of us and kind of like pick it a little bit off a little bit at a time. So.
Gary?
Yeah, so does everything, sort of a lot of things become non-conforming through this process, though? Like anything that's already in place, we change or clean it up?
That kind of depends on what changes the planning commission wants to institute. And looking at the, a lot of times you get non-conformities with setbacks and things like that. The master plan doesn't prescribe really reducing any of them. So unless that's the direction of the commission, I don't think we would be doing that. You may get the situation where you get some non-conformities because the uses allowed in a district may change through it. And so some things existing, but they are protected. They can keep operating and things like that. So yeah, that really just varies on what degree of changes the planning commission wants to institute.
Yeah, because I just think, you know, looking at the years from 58 to 99, that's a long time before they were rewritten, right?
Yeah, so I think the first one was in 1943 and it got rewritten in 1958. So it was around for about, yeah, 15 years there. Then the next one was around for about 40 years. It was amended over 200 times during that time period. It was also that the second half of that 40-year period is kind of when things were slowing down in Traverse City. That was the start of like the initial decline of downtown. That's when malls became very popular. There was a shift in preferences and stuff. Yeah. And then the current one, like I said, 26 times, or 26 years, been amended over 100 times so far, so.
I could support the first three of those items that you mentioned, the restructuring content for easier understanding, identifying discrepancies, and the legal update. Beyond that, I am very concerned about accelerating this process ahead of the fleshing out of the strategic plan. One of the pillars of the strategic plan that was adopted has to do with urban planning to preserve and protect character. And I think for us to move forward on revising of zoning maps and modifying and incorporating that into the master plan is premature until we have the goals and action plans that further express the strategic plan for the city. I also have a concern because I'm very cognizant of the fact that there were statements made during the master plan development and community interaction that promised that there would be no proactive modification of zoning maps, that zoning changes would only happen where there are developers who had requested the same. So I would, I would go only so far through the legal update, and then I would pause.
Brian?
I think you got to go through the one, you know, the first two steps. The third step is going to be an open question. And I think it's going to be something that if not this planning commission, the next planning commission is going to have to start addressing because, you know, there are things in our zoning that just simply don't apply anymore. And whether or not you actually change the zoning maps is a different question than, you know, a lot of the other stuff. When it comes to neighborhoods, we're very restricted on what we can do because of charter amendments. But I think for, you know, the commercial districts and commercial zones, I think to take a look at, you know, the zoning ordinance and it, I think that is, to get through the first two steps is going to take a year. And I think the next step will take at least another year or two. Because every planning commissioner has ever undertaken this, always goes way over the timeframe, especially if you're doing it in-house.
A good reality check.
And it's so, I mean, the first two steps are good. But I think that, you know, making these things, like these discrepancies and addressing the facade question is, you know, would be part of the section that would fall then into the section that, you know, you don't want to address right now. But by the time we actually get to it, you probably will already be, you'll probably already made more progress than we will. That being said, again, I, my thought is, you know, we address what we can when we can and just move forward on it. But I don't think it was, it wasn't the impression, I got the question about whether or not you're asking us about this. I just thought you were informing us that this was going forward.
Yeah, we're going to begin, we're going to begin rewriting the zoning ordinance. You know, the attorney's been telling us that needs to happen for a couple of years now. So my question just there was on the issue of facade materials and special requirements in the C4. Do you want to deal with them separately or just roll them into this process?
Do you have a preference?
I, I think it's, yeah, yeah. My preference would be to roll it into it. Because then you're working with the whole entirety of the document. You're understanding how the regulations in this district work with this. Going through this process, having done it with a bunch of communities, you become very intimate with the ordinance, you know. Because most time, you're just looking up something, to your point, you want to see. But when you're working through the process of rewriting, you really get to understand the mechanisms, the connections, and things like that. So, but it doesn't have to be that way, obviously. If the planning commission wants to deal with it beforehand, we can deal with it beforehand.
Now, this seems like a very large project. I'd say a year or two could still be pretty conservative how long the full rewrite could take. And I don't see that as a reason not to deal with specific pieces as they come before us. Yes, this was prompted by a specific site plan that we look at besides. But it does prompt, or it can prompt a larger discussion. And I'd say the time to have that discussion is when we have a specific case fresh in our minds, rather than a year and a half later when honestly, we may have a different composition of the planning commission that hadn't been here for that discussion. And we have already taken some changes on the zoning map in incorporating our master plan with our changing of the Old Town zoning, which that was something that had come before the planning commission years before our rewrite of the master plan. But it was in there in the master plan as something identified. It was in our goals of to look at the zoning of that specific section on that corridor for potential change. There's two other sections of corridors, West Front and 14th Street, also identified in our goals and reflected by the master plan. I would not like to see, say, 14th Street not to come before us and have a good flesh-out discussion of it because it hasn't reached that point in the rewrite of our zoning code. And thus, we haven't had that discussion fully in advance of the rebuild of 14th Street, which is coming in 2028. Since we know that that is in the CIP calendar. And if we have an idea ahead of that process on where we are with 14th Street, what the community wants to see in their, in the future there, what we can have as planning and zoning for that corridor ahead of it, then that will allow the whole rebuilding process to go more smoothly.
I did. I turned it off.
What do others think? I mean, it doesn't prohibit us from talking about it. Yeah, I mean, no, you could talk about anything at any time.
Yeah, Mitch mentioned the goals. I just pulled them up. It looks like this could fall under the goal of targeted zoning amendments called for in the master plan or the high resource zoning amendments called for under the master plan. I'm just trying to make sure we're remembering we set these goals in January. So I just wanted to.
Let's meet them. It definitely meets that goal. So how does everybody feel? Because it sounds like we want to go ahead, rewrite this, but as things can come up, that, you know, it doesn't prohibit us from discussing them just because that rewrite is happening.
And it doesn't mean that even if that's chapter 18 in the code, and we're only through chapter five, that, oh, we need to deal with that section now. And then that will be rolled into chapter 18 when we get to that.
So specifically to the facade question, do most people think it's okay to roll it into this? How many want to roll it into it? Raise your hand.
Well, so many voting.
I mean, I just want to know where we are. Because not everybody talks. That's four people. Five? One, two, three, four? One, two, three, four. So the rest of you want to do the facade now? One, two, three, four, five?
You're not counting yourself, but yes.
One, two, three. Oh, no, wait, five. I was rolling it in. One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four. How are we having, it's a tie.
I'm not voting.
Oh, you're not voting? Five. One, two, three, four. It's very close. It's exceedingly close.
Yeah, we can work on bringing it back.
Let's bring back the facade and, but we will start the zoning rewrite. How does that sound? Nod heads. Show me something. Okay, good. Is that okay with you guys? So we know what we're doing there? There's no vote needed. Okay, is there any public comment on this discussion on commercial facade materials, design standards, or is the zoning ordinance rewrite? Okay, then let's move on to see public office hours discussion.
Yeah, so one of the things, referencing the annual goals that Jerry was just talking about, was the planning commission wanted to have more and more opportunities for dialogue with the public. Because, you know, public meetings are meetings of the planning commission. Yes, there's public comment, but these aren't forums or places like that. So one thing we had discussed was setting up almost like some office hours or some places where people could meet you, talk, ask questions, understand things. So with that, Katie has been working on putting together a schedule and has some questions that she wanted to run by you. With that, I will turn it over to her to talk about what she's put together.
Hi, everyone. So yes, the schedule is in the packet. Leslie and I had some discussions about, you know, how many days and what days those would be. We thought meeting, like the little coffee hours corresponding generally with meeting dates. And since we publish the packets on Thursdays, that's out Friday seems too soon. Plus, it just doesn't seem a great day to, you know, try to remember something like that. So we thought Mondays and Tuesdays. And so on Tuesdays, the days of regular meetings. And then we kind of thought, just in case people weren't avail, you know, not everyone's available Tuesday. So we thought maybe Mondays could be the other days before study sessions or special meetings. Same thought was for the time, like some afternoon, some morning, just to be able to kind of hit more people. And yeah, the locations that I picked are places that generally have some table room and that are kind of close by so that we could walk. I know everybody here obviously lives in the city, so, you know, kind of close in to this area. But, you know, this is, this was just a jumping off point. And so we just really wanted to hear what you guys think of this. And I did put those questions in there, like the questions one through eight. It is a lot, but I hope that that's the stuff that you guys give feedback about.
Is there a reason why we can't, you think it's, we'll get a more diverse group meeting at all these different coffee shops and things rather than here?
Oh, the locations, oh, well, I thought that the intention was to be out in the public and so that it was a bit more comfortable and casual for people to stop by. Plus, then you can have a coffee because, you know, the staff member, I think the thought is, is like a staff member and commissioners will be there for, you know, an hour. If no one is there, you know, at the end, then they leave. If people are still there, then they can stay. So I think it was kind of to make it a bit more informal than coming in here.
Yeah, and it kind of builds off like when we kicked off the master plan, for those that were around, and we did the pop-up sessions. Instead of asking everyone to come to us, we went to the people. And so I think that was kind of the idea that we were adopting here. And similarly, once we do get these dates and kind of locations figured out, we'll put together like we did for the pop-up sessions, a Google Doc where people can go and then enter their names, like which ones they want to sign up for. And then we know who's going to be where, when. But this is just, I think Katie's trying to get feedback on the meeting frequency.
Yeah, the number of days.
Brian was really lobbying for extra meetings in the summer, but she gave a break in the summer. So that's, that's in there.
And just to clarify, the options that I gave for locations, I mean, I'm not, whatever you guys would want to do. It's like if we wanted to try a new place every time, or if you just said, you know, the basement of Horizon Books or something is where we want to have it. It's easiest that way. I mean, that's fine, too. I was just trying to give options of places around here.
I hear Sean has some new space going in. Maybe we can meet in his.
I'll have my mother-in-law put the tea on. She doesn't drink coffee, but she'll serve you a tea.
Sorry, so would these places, sorry, change?
Well, that would be up to you guys, yeah. Like I gave that whole list and it doesn't necessarily have to be that.
So it could be like every third Tuesday at 2:00 at Moon Nose?
Yes, yeah.
And be set. Or it could change.
Yes.
And I think that's kind of the feedback. Would you like a more regular schedule like that? Would you want it floating around the city month to month? You know, that puts us where people are, but it also creates confusion sometimes, so.
And maybe there's in a room. If you go into some of these littler places.
I kind of like a consistency thing, like every whatever at this place. But I don't, I don't know about the times. Like during the day, I could never, I could never do that. And then for other people in the public, if they're working during nine to fives. You know, like having at least one evening at some point, I think for some of us and some of the people would be good.
Would you guys support that? I think we're being a little cautious as unpaid volunteers of asking more nighttime.
But that's what would be, I think, most useful for people, but.
Yeah, I think so.
I'm available at like 6:00 AM to like 7:00 AM. And then like 7:00 PM to like 7:30.
It's like join Shay like at the gym or like while he's like changing diapers or something.
Both, both. Yeah, both.
No, we realize not everyone can make every time, so. But I think Jess has a good point that these are monthly, correct?
Well, there's.
Two a month.
An answer for that.
I think once a month, there should be an evening.
I feel like once a month in general.
I'm also fine with one day, one evening. Two a month, max.
One day, one evening, maybe find a more consistent rhythm, almost like our meetings that are the first and third, something like that.
One hour. It's a blocked time.
May I ask, is this permitted by planning commission bylaws and city regulation? I'm real sensitive to, you know, setting ourselves up for a potential for conferring outside of public noticed meetings.
Are you talking about like open meeting, like a potential forum?
Meeting. I'm also concerned about the demand on time for volunteers who are uncompensated, who may be working full-time outside or inside the home. I can also share with you that as a city commissioner who has held weekly evening office hours. as as a city commissioner who has held weekly evening office hours through twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, you'll be lucky to get maybe one person attending per month. It's it's single-digit attendance. And then I wondered, have you thought through, if someone comes to one of these and raises an issue, what will you do with that? How do you hope to respond?
Well, they could do that to you at any time, right? A someone can come up to you at any time as your role and and raise an issue to you. And you get to decide what you do with that, yeah?
But if this is an officially sponsored mandated activity of the of the planning commission, I would I would really appreciate a review by our city attorney of of this situation before we went too much further.
Yeah, it wouldn't be mandated. It'd be optional, just like the when we did the pop-up sessions, you know, some.
And then I guess the question of why, what are we hoping to accomplish?
This was in your goals.
This was your goals. So we're just implementing what the planning.
Our goal is improving communication with the community. Our goal is not to hold office hours. That's a solution that has come from from somewhere else.
Somewhere else? I think it came from this very building.
Yeah, this is.
It did come from us as a way to go out into the community, go to the people.
To improve communication.
Communication that they can.
How about a town hall? How about a town hall one hour before regular meetings?
That's the purpose of a public hearing, though. So you can't.
No, we want a town hall because it would be interactive. It would be a dialogue. That's a town hall format.
I think that would violate.
So, yeah, so nothing would preclude you from doing this. Again, this was the adopted planning commission goals that they self-selected, that they wanted to improve communication. And this was one of the things that was recommended, was to go and find times to meet with people. We had a lot of discussions on that. And so Katie has been working on it since the planning commission has given that direction. So having any kind of meeting of planning commissioners, no, that is not a legal issue. It's the same exact thing that we did with the pop-up sessions, as long as you don't establish a quorum. As long as you are not, you know, conferring ex parte about a particular application with the applicant outside of the meeting. Then, yeah.
We're not voting on anything.
Yeah, so.
It's just, it's just to be there. And you're right, maybe only one person, maybe no people will come. But we can say, we established this, we put it out to the community, this is where we're going to be. Come and talk to us, ask your questions, tell us your concerns. If we can answer, you know, short answer, we will answer. We can pull up maps and show it to them, whatever. But at least we can say we tried. And maybe no one will come, but we tried.
And it also depends on meeting people where they are. Sometime, we might find through trial and error that some locations work very well. It's not a formally structured thing that I've posted, but after meetings, I often go and sit outside of Horizon Books. And say on a Tuesday night, when we normally have our meetings, there's the film festival happening two doors down. So at nine thirty, many people walk by. And folks that know me as a city commissioner or planning commissioner often have questions, comments, or concerns about city government. And I am there, I'm available to the public, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anyone ask? I'm sorry, Brian, go ahead.
So, okay, I don't think you can get much or not unless it's a controversial issue. And I think you're going to be swamped. Whether it's a town hall or, I mean, I I don't disagree that the planning commission as a group has, you know, suggested this. I'm just, I've always had issues or concerns about it. But if people want to do it, I'm fine with it. I don't think you're going to have any issues legally, whether you want to do it or not. But you really need to, I think, put this forth more as a listening session and not try to answer people's questions. Because one, as planning commissioners, people ask those technical questions, you don't want to be giving bad information. Two, you do want to be concerned about any ex parte discussions about something that's before the planning commission, especially if an interested party. So you always have to be concerned about that. So really, you're there to listen. But I also don't think you're going to have much turnout at any of these. And I also agree that you need to have something. You've got a volunteer to meet with people at seven AM. I think that's good if you can get someone from staff to do that for coffee. I don't know if how much part take you'll get. And then probably something more in the evening. So, um, and then who shows up, which is one of your questions? You know, I'd like to say, you know, we should always have the chair or the vice chair there, but that'd be kind of stingy on my part, so. It'd give us the rest of us an excuse to beg off at the last minute. So, no, I don't think it's necessary, but. You never want more than two people because we do have committees. And you don't want any disarguing. We don't have a lot, but you don't want to run into those conflicts. So I think you'd be limited to two people.
Another thing we talked about way back when we were talking about, it was a long time ago, talking about communication, was the city has a way online for people to submit questions or comments. And perhaps the planning commission or they or they take, if it comes through the city website somehow, they get it to us. And we answer it, like at a meeting, we could read one of the questions out loud that somebody has asked and answer it. And whoever's watching the meeting will hear it. I mean, it could be something like that, too, where we're.
Or dedicate a study session quarterly to a listening session and and accumulate inquiries and respond in a in a public and and appropriate and recorded format.
But we were trying to call it the multi-pronged approach, so this was part of it, you know, a list, a office hour.
And there's no requirement for anyone to sign up, you know? No one has to participate. We will, as staff, one of us will be, whichever ones people do sign up for, just for the sake of technical questions come up or anything like that, but, yeah.
So, I mean, if you get someone, you know, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Honestly, whoever starts at the seven AM would get to leave early that day. And if someone wants to do like a five or six, then they could come in late that day or the next day. So, you know, so you're not. But again, it's, I I think, you know, and whoever it is, you should plan on doing something to keep yourself occupied.
Oh, sure.
So, because it's going to be.
It's one hour, right?
But the other thing is, you know, it's repetition, repetition, repetition.
One hour, we stay one hour?
You want this to work, you can't just try it for six months and then drop it. You're going to have to be committed to doing this for years before you start getting any type of people know about it, so.
Since we're talking about goals, it's come up in a couple of items. You know, I pulled a a copy of our twenty twenty-five adopted goals. And would it be possible for the the staff to maybe just prepare a two-pager that would give us an update of where we stand relative to accomplishing those goals and what you expect to be happening during the remaining one-third of the year? You know, we're kind of two-thirds through this calendar year. And we we were, in adopting those goals, sensitive to a full plate. But I would, I would like to, you know, hear from, hear from staff about where we are now on those. What what has happened, what have we accomplished, and what remains to be accomplished? Is that possible?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I mean, we can put it in there. Yeah, we say we have them all written on the whiteboard with comments and checks and assigning and stuff. So we can go afterwards and look at it, too.
If it was a written document, it would be available to anybody who accesses the packet.
Yeah.
Another comment, sorry. Perhaps, just a thought came to my mind. Perhaps you want to consider seeing if any other appointed committees or commissions would be interested in joining us or we might have some alignment. So, and it could be anything from the Commons to the Parks and Rec. And the re, and that would basically expand your reach a little bit more. Plus, you would have a little interaction between members of the planning commission and Parks and Rec commission. So, and, you know, I don't know what other, nothing else comes to mind.
Historic districts, Board of Zoning Appeals.
You could do the Board of Zoning Appeals. You don't want to do the Board of Tax Review because they get paid.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is try it. You're going to have it in a Google Doc. I think, you know, the times should be also, that are good for you because staff members are going to.
Yeah, I mean, we put some thought into it when the way Katie picked the times initially, knowing we have recurring standing weekly meetings and stuff like that. But I think we've gotten some feedback to modify this.
Like eve, like what does evening mean? Like five or six later, like?
I mean, I'm, I mean, I, I mean, again, I don't, yeah, I don't know how many people are going to come and if this, does this really matter? But, I mean, a lot of people do work till five. So if we're trying to address more people that work those hours, then it would be, I would say, six.
My office hours have been.
It could be five thirty.
Yes, my office hours have been six to seven thirty.
Yeah, I would do like five thirty. I mean, I think what you do is you want to give people the opportunity to stop on the way home. So you could even do five to six. I mean, you don't need that much time.
Right, no.
They're going to stop by, they're going to say hi, they're going to have some questions. And if you're there after six, that's great, it gives them plenty of time. But it's not a huge, you know, imposition. It's just extends, and it's also easier for staff. So they get an extra hour. They have to stay an extra hour. They can come in an hour later, take off an early, hour early on Friday.
Bank all of them, take every Friday?
Whoever's here on Friday.
Anna had a question.
In terms of like people, oh, um, people present, I think one staffer and two commissioners, max. I think as somebody that did some master plan sessions, I did a couple with staff and a couple without staff. And the ones I did without staff were at the high school, so I was capable. But like if I happened to be at the farmer's market where I had staff, that would have scared me a little bit.
Yeah, the intention was to always have a a staff member present, yeah.
I agree, I love that. But then, like, I think more than two commissioners, obviously, we can't. But one or two would be sufficient, in my opinion.
The list of location options is just that, options, and ultimately will depend on availability and other factors. But I would like some other places, like Building Fifty or the library or NMC. NMC even has a cafe that would fit with a coffee theme overall. I'll go to those.
Okay, do you have enough direction?
Yep, I think so.
Well, what, um, if we're going to switch one of them to an evening, what is the, you know, we're, I was proposing like a two PM and a ten AM. So what are you thinking would drop? Like the two PM? Does ten AM sound right?
Does it make more sense, from what I'm hearing, is like an evening one and a day one? Is that correct? Okay. Does it make sense for the day one to be like around noon if people want to come on their lunch break? It seems like it would offer the most flexibility.
Yeah, or at the top, top of the morning, like eight or nine.
Besides, I could have my lunch then.
I think noon is better than eight or nine because people are so busy.
What about a noon and six? As two options. Have a noon meeting once a month, a six once a month.
I still prefer five thirty just because I work till five and like I wouldn't want to go home and come back. But noon and five thirty is great.
Okay, and then since these are, like, the schedule as proposed, again, is correlated to regular meetings and then study sessions, like those meeting weeks, if a meeting was canceled. Is this thing canceled? Is it? No?
And you're having it on Mon, you were talking about a Monday, which is not a normal meeting day for us, anyway.
Except for next week.
I'm talking about the day before and the day after.
I don't think it would be canceled just because our meeting is canceled.
Yeah, we don't want to do it on meeting days.
No, no, we can't do it.
Although some are on here for Tuesdays.
Yeah, the two o'clock.
I mean, if you can be consistent with the days of the weeks, you're going to have a better chance of people knowing it's out there.
Well, yeah, that's fine, too.
It's always the certain days of the weeks.
Yeah, I mean, again, the thought, if people wanted to, if, you know, there was, the thought was to keep it close to a meeting.
Yeah.
So would you want that to be then on, I mean, if we're doing evenings, then we couldn't do Tuesdays?
I don't think we should meet on days of meetings.
So this is like Mondays, then? Always on Mondays?
I think the middle of the day one on Mondays because of the city commission meetings.
Yeah, I think Wednesday, how do you feel about Wednesdays, midweek?
Love it.
I think Fridays and Mondays interfere a lot with weekend plans if someone's doing a long weekend. We have a lot of Monday holidays. Monday's city commission meeting, Tuesday's planning commission.
But Wednesday is middle of the week, that's fine.
I think that's good.
I don't, I don't know whatever anybody else feels about this, but I, do you like the idea of having people being able to write in something that we can address at the top of a meeting, like take one question, the question of the week or something like that, if it can be answered?
What a Facebook page.
Uh. Our communications manager, yeah, it gets really messy, prefers us not to do that. I mean, the Ask the City thing is still there, people just kind of quit using it.
Or we have to advertise that you could also ask the planning commission through that. And then she would just send it to us, right?
Because we have that email address. Are you talking about a different?
So, yeah, people would email a question and then we'd email them back? Or wait, what? Sorry, how would we do that?
Or somehow get it out there. I mean, I know, we know we have an email address, and I don't know that everybody knows that. But if we make a concerted effort to say, hey, ask the planning commission a question, either do it through the city site or here's an email. And it's like a real general question that, like, nobody knows and we should educate people on. Then at the top of a meeting, we'll say, hey, this was a question of the week that we got, and here's the answer. And we say it at the meeting. And, uh, apparently watch these meetings, so they'll hear it if they, if they're watching.
And people attend these meetings.
And people attend these meetings, true. And you could even write it, if, you know, if it's a big enough question, and you think, wow, lots of people need to know this, then maybe there's a place in our website to answer the question to the week. And then we we we've set it in a meeting, we've written it down.
Yeah, I mean, that's maybe something that could be incorporated, like into the Bay Brief.
Yeah, there you go, that, too.
And there could also be something, you know, advertised in the Bay Brief about, you know, utilizing the 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 planning commission email more.
That'd be great. And then also in the Bay Brief, we put, you know, we're trying to communicate more with our public. We're going to have these office hours, we're going to have this way to email in and stay tuned for more in the Bay Brief, whatever.
Yeah, I wonder if there's a way, kind of, you can't, you can't assume people are going to do it, but like if someone could what I don't want to happen is, you know, we show up, no one shows up, now we've, you know, like it'd be good if there's a way they could submit, hey, I'll come to this office hour. But again, I know you can't force it. But I'm just thinking, like, what if four people show up to a coffee shop and no one shows up?
Yeah, I mean, that's that.
And maybe that's just what happens, and maybe that's what, I mean, I'm just thinking, like, how do we heap them? I mean, I guess then we report back, no one showed up to the office hours for.
Yeah, and then reevaluate in six months.
Yeah, but you said we did it for six months, we were there. Two people showed up. Two people showed up in six months.
It's going to take six months for people just to find out about it.
Twelve months.
Two years.
Advertising it.
Three years.
But you know, Colleen.
I'll be gone by then, so.
No, we'll keep you around, even if you're going to prop you up.
I mean, Colleen could make, you know, Facebook events for this. And they could be shared. You could share them on your personal Facebook pages if you want.
Yeah.
And the interim city manager did these.
And the city could offer to buy their residents coffee.
The, yeah, when the assistant city manager or the interim city manager, when he was here, he did some of these listening sessions. And he worked with the communications manager who advertised them. And he actually did have, I think he did four of them over four weeks and had pretty good showing at each one. But, you know, that was a new. But, you know, that was a new entity, a new city manager, and people liked to talk to it. Yeah, I mean, I think the reality is, like the discussion indicated earlier, all of you are subjected to people bringing up questions or topics or concerns at any moment. But that's happenstance, it's serendipity. People have to bump into you. This gives them a chance where if they want, they can find you at a known time and have those conversations that are already able to occur just with the more predictability to it, more accessibility or improved accessibility, so.
Let's give it a try. Shall we? Okay. I think, any public comment on the public hours discussion? Nope. All right, so let's move on to reports. Update from the City Commission.
We will begin next week the process of setting goals and action plans to flesh out the strategic plan. We're working with Future IQ and there will be one-on-one meetings with commissioners as well as a group work that I believe is Wednesday at the Senior Center. And I'm not sure of the time of day. I'm sorry.
3:30, I think.
3:30?
I think it's in the Bay Brief.
Pardon me?
I think it's in the Bay Brief.
Yeah, it should be in the Bay Brief.
I'll check real quick on that. Is that the 8th, Jackie?
Yes.
Yes, 3:30.
It hasn't been published yet, bear with me. I know I saw something come through.
Gary says it's 3:30.
It's 3:30.
We talked about it down that step today.
Yes, yes, this is strategic plan.
Yep. But that one will be at the Senior Center, too, right?
That's just for commissioners, City Commissioners.
Oh, it's a public meeting, so anyone can come. But it's a City Commission study session meeting, yeah, work session.
Okay, any other news for the City Commission?
I had a short meeting yesterday, unusual.
Update from the Planning Department.
Yeah, just a reminder that on Monday you do have the joint meeting, so that will take the place of the study session. That is at 7:00 PM on Monday, not this body's typical 6:00 PM. It will be in here, yep. So we will have a number of speakers. They will be discussing their agency programming and other opportunities to help with housing. So we'll have Liz Keegan from the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan. She will be doing some training on the Federal Fair Housing Act as a requirement of the CDVG program that we have. We have Tony Lenti from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, formerly the Traverse City Housing Commission Executive Director, to talk about some of the Mishta programs. Sarah Lucas, she is the head of Michigan's Office of Rural Prosperity. And they're real advocates and supporters of programming to help support the rural communities in Michigan. So she will be talking about some of her stuff. We'll have Susan Leithhauser-Yee of Housing North. She'll be providing an overview on the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Program. And then the city attorney will be discussing the Housing, sorry, the Attainable Housing Facilities Act and the Residential Housing Facilities Act, both of which were adopted in 2022. And they provide opportunities for reduced taxes for properties that provide housing for income-qualified individuals. And there's some nuance to it. They help with renovations and relocating people, why properties are getting renovated and things like that. So one of the main objectives, though, is going to be between the Planning Commission and the City Commission, which programs they want the totality of city staff to begin pursuing to help support housing here. So that is where you two bodies will have the opportunity to come to an agreement on some of that. And that's it.
Okay, update from the Grand Traverse Commons Joint Planning Commission.
So the Joint Planning Commission is currently reviewing their master plan. Master plan is required to be reviewed every five years. Even though we're only about halfway through that process, it has been indicated that there's a strong desire to update it. Not rewrite it, but update it. It was adopted, I think, in 2009? Does that sound right? So it's been there for a while. A lot of it is dated. There's timelines and demographics that all end in 2009. A lot has happened since then. So we're going through that process with them. It's slow. It's, you know, we meet quarterly. And it's a unique property. It's small, it's not an entire city. And really, the focus is historical preservation out there. So there's not a lot of change that happens at the Commons to the grounds itself. So we'll just keep working through that process.
Or the zoning bills, didn't meet.
Nope, already canceled for tomorrow.
I know. Update from the Riparian Buffer Committee, everyone?
Yeah, we went through our first draft officially. Very exciting. I think it's pending updates and then having one more meeting, it sounded like, at least one more meeting. The group loves meeting.
That's great. Okay, let's receive and file.
Just if there's any reports, just to-
No reports? Okay. Is there any closing public comment?
So I'm Bill Kimball, Traverse City resident. And this is partly a reply to an August 16th forum article entitled "Livable Density Can Lead to Thriving Neighborhoods." To the author, I'm delighted to know that you love where you live, and this is not the first time I've heard about it. But I also love where I live, in Slabtown. I've lived there just over 30 years. And many, many, very many of residents of Slabtown also love living in Slabtown. Some people will wait until a property becomes available in Slabtown to make the decision to purchase a home in Slabtown, as opposed to other neighborhoods in the city. But that desired quality of life hangs in a precarious balance because most of the Planning Commission, with guidance from the Planning Director, have chosen to put part of Slabtown, Bay Street, in a transitional neighborhood designation. So it will transition from R1B to multifamily housing and commercial zoning. And you master planners have said many times that this master plan has neighborhood preservation as its number-one priority. That this plan has been based on neighborhood input, that the citizen who wrote the plan, you told us this with a straight face. But do you recognize how tone deaf that is? Because we attended meetings, delivered our comments, attended open houses, and the results of the Slabtown listening sessions clearly called for preserving the single-family character of the neighborhood. But we recognized how deaf you were to our calls for transitional neighborhood designation to be removed. You were deaf to a petition signed by 329 to 330 Slabtown neighbors to keep Bay Street, R1B, without transitional neighborhood designation in the future land use map. You completely ignored the expressed and documented wishes of residents whose best interests you're supposed to represent. But you treat Slabtown just like a spot on a map in a developer's board game with no regard for the impact on residents, no regard for the residents' expressed desire to express desire for the preservation of their neighborhood in which they have developed, in which they have invested, in which you have professed was your number-one priority. So you live in the housing choice, the housing of your choice, but don't lecture us on how we choose our housing choices. Most of all, don't make policy in direct opposition to the residents' expressed desires. Both the master plan and the strategic plan call for neighborhood preservation. And your plans fall way short of those lofty goals. And so you have a long, long way to go to be trusted in your communications with residents.
Thank you. Any other closing public comment? This meeting is adjourned, then. Thank you, everybody.